13th 2020 meeting of the Iredell County Board of Commissioners. At this time, I'd like you to please bow your head in silent prayer or reflection, particularly raising up our county, our state, and our country as we deal with the increasingly dire results of this pandemic. If you please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Jones, would you please review any adjustments to the agenda?
Yes, Sir Chairman Mallory, we have three adjustments. The first is to add a COVID-19 update for Iredell County to appointment before the board. The next item is to add an announcement under new business made by Commissioner Haupt. And the final item is to remove attorney-client from closed session.
Okay. Are there any further adjustments to the agenda? Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I make a motion and we approve them.
Motion by Commissioner Brown. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose like sign.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. For the record, Marvin Norman, Commissioner Norman, is appearing with us remotely. There is about a seven-second delay between what he hears, or what we say, and then he responds. It takes seven seconds before it comes across the microphone. So that's why there may be several pregnant pauses between us voting and Commissioner Norman's vote coming in over the audio. And I also would like to welcome for our first full meeting, first business meeting, Commissioner Scotty Brown. And our new vice chair, Melissa Neder. And welcome back, Commissioner Haupt. All three who have been through the most recent election and look forward to working as a team for the betterment of Iredell County and its citizens. There are no, there is an appointment before the board. We've asked to get an update on COVID-19 in Iredell County. And our county manager, Beth Jones, has done the mind meld with Jane Henson, our public health director, and is now imbued with all of the expertise of Jane in her stead.
I would not go that far. But I'm going to do my best to present some information and give you an update regarding COVID-19 and how that is impacting Iredell County. Again, Ms. Henson, she is up to her neck in alligators, as they would say, so I'm standing in in her stead. As of today, these are our numbers in Iredell County, and this shows the breakout of positive cases that we have in the northern, central, and southern end of our county. We currently have 7,512 positive cases. 62 are currently hospitalized, and we have had 85 deaths so far. This shows you representative of those three areas, the northern, central, and southern, as far as a percent of our population, what percent of population those areas represent, and then the case count represented by percentages as well. This graph shows you the cases per 10,000 residents of Iredell County and our surrounding counties. And if you notice, several months ago, we were on the very far end. We had the least amount of cases per 10,000 residents. But unfortunately, the good news is we're on the smaller end of the spectrum, but we have moved to third, to the smallest. And you can see Iredell County in the green bar. But this shows you the number of cases per 10,000 in our surrounding counties. And of course, unfortunately, the highest is Catawba County at this point. This does, every time I update this graph, it does fluctuate. So, but the good news is Iredell County has remained on the lower end of the spectrum. This is a new alert system that the state has begun, and they are updating this sporadically. When it first came out, we were in Orange County, and we have just recently moved to the red county. And red shows critical spread of COVID-19 cases. And that is predicated on a 14-day case rate per 100,000 population, and ours is currently 594. 14-day percent positives. Our, for Iredell County, is 12.8%, which is the highest we've seen to date. Hospital impact, which is a high impact. And then our previous tier, which was in the last release on November the 23rd, was orange. So we have transitioned from orange, which shows substantial spread, to critical, which is red. Currently, right now, there are 48 counties that are red in the state of North Carolina, again, 100 counties in the state of North Carolina. 48 are identified as red, and 34 are identified as orange. This just goes through and gives you some explanation as far as how the tiers are determined, and I covered that earlier and told you about Iredell County's numbers and how we are impacted. These are some graphs that tells you about our weekly average of positive COVID-19 cases. And if you'll see, we have seen a sharp increase over the past several weeks. Actually, going from probably about the middle of October forward, we have seen a steady increase in our positive cases. This graph shows the current and possible future impact in our healthcare system. The orange bar that you see, that's our weekly average of individuals that are isolated at home, so they have tested positive, they're isolating at home. The blue shows the new cases by week. And then the gray line shows you the average, the weekly average current hospitalized. So if you look at that gray line and see that sharp increase, you can see where we're having an increase in hospitalizations. I will note that we have changed how we're reporting this somewhat, and the fact that we were previously reporting only individuals that lived in Iredell County that were hospitalized here in Iredell County. But our hospitals serve patients from other counties as well. So in order to understand the capacity of our hospitals, we need to look at what total capacity is, not just taken up by Iredell County residents, but what their total capacity is. This is something that, the message that was communicated by our chairman, the mayors of our municipalities, and our hospital leaders, as well as Ms. Henson, that was the call for we're seeing a huge spike in our numbers. We're having an issue with our hospital capacities. And everybody joined together to try to put out a public service announcement of how critical it is that we get these numbers under control. Because once our hospital capacity is at peak, there is no more, no more beds for those individuals that are going to need them. So we really need to do our part to try to control those individuals that are going to need medical care as a result of COVID-19 and try to control our cases. Again, this shows the weekly average of hospitalizations in Iredell County. Average for December 7th through the 13th is 59 weekly cases. And one thing I want to draw attention to is we, again, every month, we post our mass testing calendar on our website. This is a picture of that. It shows all the different areas and places that we are doing testing. And throughout the county, the only day we're not performing testing is on Sundays. And then, of course, on Christmas Day, the 25th, we're not performing testing. But every other day, we are performing testing free of charge for COVID-19. And this will tell you when and where. And that, this can be seen on our website, on Iredell County website, under COVID-19. And then you can click on the tab on the right, excuse me, on the left, and it says "Community Testing," and you can pull up the calendar and find the dates and locations. One thing that I do want to say, because of the spike in the numbers that we're seeing, we simply cannot keep up with the close contact tracing that our staff are doing in the Health Department. And the reason is because we're moving to vaccination protocol. Vaccines are supposed to be coming. What we're hearing, they're supposed to be here next week. And those vaccines are going to be administered by our local Health Department. So they are part of the vaccination team. The first vaccines will go to the hospital workers, those healthcare workers, and they're part of that vaccination team. So our Health Department is really working diligently, trying to get a plan in place, establish locations, all the logistics for being able to administer these vaccines. So what we're going to do, and what we're beginning, is we're going to transition the in-house case investigation and close contacts from internal staff to the state staff. The state is providing staff of paid contact tracers, close contact tracers. So we're going to be taking advantage of that and transitioning that work to the state staff to do that. And then that will free up resources for our existing staff to focus on the vaccines and having the vaccination clinics and things of that nature. So that is, we're working on that, and that's going to help us, hopefully. Our Health Department is certainly working all hours of the day and night, so they're looking forward to getting some assistance. Again, I said early, we anticipate receiving a vaccine the week of December the 21st for administration to those healthcare providers. It is going to be a tiered approach. We will only get certain vaccines. It's a two-dose vaccine, so you'll get the first dose. Several days later, you'll have to come back and get the second dose. There's criteria as far as how it can be stored, the temperatures in which it needs to be stored, things of that nature. And I will say, our EMS is also working with our Health Department. They're part of this vaccination team to identify locations and things of that nature. So our departments are certainly doing their part and participating, but we certainly need our residents to do their part as well. I know the holidays are coming up, and that's one thing that, at Christmas, everybody likes to get together for the holidays and have their holiday gatherings and things of that nature. And we're certainly asking for everybody to be conscious of what's happening with our numbers. Please be mindful of your social distancing, wear your face covering, and please limit your gatherings. And take care of those individuals, those loved ones that you need to protect. Even though you may have a very healthy immune system and think that you're completely immune to it, you may have someone else that has a compromised immune system in your family, and you need to make sure that you're doing the right thing to protect them as well. So we're certainly asking, and I know everybody has heard this, we're asking the three Ws: to wash your hands often, wear a face covering, and wait six feet apart, and practice your social distancing. I'll be more than happy to answer any questions. I can't guarantee you I have all the answers that Jane Henson would give you, but I will certainly do my best.
Ms., I had a couple things. I had some calls yesterday, and there was some confusion. People saw where there was a vaccine available, started this week, to first come, first serve. And Jane elaborated on that, that that was flu, regular flu vaccines, so people would know that. And that the first set of vaccines that came in this week went to Iredell Memorial Hospital. And there's an algorithm and others that decide the protocols and who gets the COVID vaccines as they come in. We're not deciding that.
No, that is dictated to us by the state. It's going to the healthcare workers that deal directly with those COVID patients, long-term care providers. Then it will go with first responders, and there's a tier mechanism.
There's an algorithm that decides that.
Yes, there's a tier mechanism, and there's several different phases as far as when it will be available. But we are not dictating who gets it and who doesn't.
I just wanted people to distinguish the difference between what they had gotten confused on Facebook and other misinformation out there.
Yes, and you're correct. The vaccine that was communicated that was available, it was the flu vaccine, and it is available.
Right.
The testing that we're doing here in Iredell County, is it the rapid testing?
It's the three-day antigen testing. It's not the rapid test.
Is that the one that's approved for flying and stuff?
Approved for flying, yes.
It is.
Yes, the three-day, the three-day test.
The PRC test, which this is, is more accurate than the rapid result test. The rapid result test, if you get a positive, you definitely have COVID. But if you get a negative, there's a higher false negative result. You may still have COVID, it just hasn't picked up on it.
Correct.
And so this PRC test, the one that is available free of charge, if you go on the county website, you'll see the locations. You can call ahead, make an appointment. But actually, what you're doing is you're having to talk to a doctor who is going to give you a prescription to have the test done. If you, you can do that ahead of time, you can do that online, and get that squared away, and then just show up at the drive-in, drive-through site. The swab is not one of these spears that they stick up into your brain. Okay? This is just a very limited entry, the end of your nasal, end of your nose, and a little swish, and it's sort of like just the experience you get with pouring a Coke in a can and sticking it up under your nose. It's a little tickle. But basically, very quick, you might have a 30-minute wait while everybody goes through the thing. But if you haven't called ahead or had your appointment or discussion with the doctor, they'll do it right there, so.
And you never have to get out of your vehicle.
Yeah. And you, the results can be back in as little as two days, but generally three. So.
Any other questions?
Any other questions? Well, if I could just say that the results that you've seen, and go back to that one showing the daily average here, you know, we're approaching, you know, 200 cases weekly, which is an order of magnitude of, you know, five times what we are dealing with in the summer months. We are rapidly approaching a point where our hospitals are literally, as Jones has mentioned, running out of beds. That affects not only those patients that need that specialized treatment, but it also affects anyone who is needing to go in for any reason, whether it's a heart issue or any other kind of chronic condition. The availability of hospital beds for procedures get delayed. So the impact that this has in terms of the overburdening of our system has an impact on the general public as far as other health-related issues. We are a regional healthcare provider. Alexander County, for instance, does not have a hospital. So Catawba County and Iredell County take the bulk of folks that need hospitalization from Alexander County. But that's not a majority of what's in our hospitals. But our CEOs of all three hospitals, Iredell Memorial and Davis Regional and Lake Norman Regional, are very concerned and have asked that the general public take seriously the governor's order to mask up. And the governor's order requires that everyone wear a mask. If you're indoors, if you're outdoors and not able to maintain your social distancing, everyone should be wearing a mask. It's a simple thing. It doesn't preclude you from doing anything to generate an income, unless you're a lip reader. You know? You, there's nothing we can't do while wearing a mask. It's not what you do, it's how you do it. And it's a simple process of limiting the spread and providing some limited protection for yourself, depending on the kind of mask that you wear. So if you're wearing a cloth mask with a couple of layers, you might get a 20% protection rate in terms of reducing the viral load that you might get exposed to. You may have a slightly less serious case, but you still potentially are going to be infected.
Actually, Ms. Henson sent me those statistics, and I failed to mention those. Wearing cloth face coverings reduces the risk of transmission by 77%. Social distancing reduces the risk of transmission 85%.
Okay, so those two factors in combination, plus washing your hands when you come in contact with a lot of different surfaces. Just simple, personal things that we can do. If you're really concerned about limiting the ability, you know, you get a KN-95 at the top end. N-95 should be used by healthcare personnel. Or you get, you know, the standard surgical mask, which has, once again, a better result in terms of protecting yourself than does a cloth mask. So if everyone will, you know, the numbers we're seeing now are a result of Thanksgiving. And Christmas holidays, you know, if you take where we are right now and you get the same factors of spread, we will be overtaxing our hospitals. They're not going to be able to handle it. So this is really serious stuff. It's about just simply looking out for your neighbors and your family and your coworkers and not infringing on anyone's rights to do anything they would normally do. Now, of course, the governor's order also restricts, you know, sale of alcohol, indoor dining, there's a whole litany of things there. But there's no reason we can't balance our livelihoods with our lives. We don't have to choose between one or the other. So thank you, Ms. Jones, for pinch hitting, and want to give a shout out to all of our healthcare workers who not only are putting in tremendously long hours, but who are extremely emotionally stressed over the difficulty you have of dealing with patients that many succumb to this virus. And we've had, as of yesterday, 81 Iredell County citizens, unfortunately, who have passed.
We had four today, so we're at 85.
Four more today, that's a total of 85. It's a lot of families grieving out there. Don't let that family be yours. Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move on then. We had a public hearing on an economic development incentive for Project GG, which has been canceled. Item eight is the administrative matters appropriate for our consent agenda. These are issues that typically are fairly cut-and-dried presentations related to budgetary issues by staff. And so at our pre-agenda meeting at 5:00, we discuss these, we vote on them, or as being appropriate for our consent agenda. That meeting is open to the public, it's also televised. So what this does is it frees up our staff. Once they've presented, they can go home, be with their families, instead of waiting around for us to do this at the 7:00 hour. So, Ms. Jones, if you would please summarize those items that we have put on our consent agenda.
Yes, Sir, thank you, Chairman Mallory. The first item is a request from emergency management to apply for a local emergency planning committee, or LEPC, grant in the amount of $1,000 to purchase materials and equipment to support this organization. The next item is a request from emergency management to apply for a Tier Two hazardous materials grant in the amount of $10,000 to conduct a hazmat technician course in conjunction with Mitchell Community College. There's a request from the Fire Tax Oversight Committee to approve Budget Amendment Number 31 to allocate $200,000 from the countywide fire service district undesignated fund balance to Central Volunteer Fire Department to purchase land for a future station. This land is right across the street from the existing fire department. A request from Solid Waste to apply for a grant to replace aging diesel engines, or grade grant, in the amount of $266,225. A request from Planning and Development for approval to release the remainder of $2,031.25 cash bond on a stormwater control pond at 1214 River Highway in Mooresville. A request from Tax Administration for approval of the November 2020 refunds and releases. A request from the Clerk to the Board for approval of minutes from the meeting on December the 7th. And these were approved in two rounds. The first set, which was the previous board, was agreed by consent by the members on that board, Chairman Mallory, Commissioner Norman, and Commissioner Haupt. And then the remainder minutes were approved by the full board by consent. A request from Economic Development to present the Revamp Project, which is a joint initiative to enhance the market and marketing capabilities of motorsports-related manufacturers in North Carolina. And this was just for informational only, to present this to the board and have a conversation. The board had questions for Iredell County Economic Development, and they will be giving more information to the board to consider at a future meeting.
All right. Is there any further discussion on the items on our consent agenda? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve our consent agenda?
Make a motion and we approve.
Motion by Commissioner Brown. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose a like sign. Commissioner Norman?
Yes.
Okay, just waiting for your aye. Motion is approved unanimously. Move on to item nine. There are no announcements of any vacancies occurring on boards or commissions this evening. Item 10, we do have two. Item 10, we do have two, one board and one committee, the Personnel Advisory Committee with two appointments and the Planning Board with two appointments to alternate positions. Are there any motions?
I'd like to make a motion for the Personnel Advisory Committee for those two appointments of Cindy Small and Charles Page.
Motion by Vice Chairman Neder. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed like sign? Motion carries unanimously. Our next item is on the Planning Board. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion. After we filled the Planning Board alternate seats last time with off, ongoing members Neder and Brown after they joined the Board of Commissioners, Andy Webster and Rhonda Hope were kind of on deck, and I want to thank Cameron Cheek for his application to serve on a board and his willingness to do that, and will definitely keep him in mind for future appointments. But I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Andy Webster and Rhonda Hope to the two alternate positions on the Planning Board to replace Commissioner Brown and Commissioner Neder.
Motion by Commissioner Haupt. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Like, any negatives? Hearing none, motion carries unanimously. Want to thank folks that volunteered to serve on these boards. Just for future reference, we are, we, we announced these vacancies at least two weeks prior to having a vote. Folks need to fill out a application form, submit that to our clerk, and then we will review those applicants. In terms of finding out whether there is any opportunities to serve, and there are multitudes of boards and commissions that citizens have a opportunity, and we have a need for them to serve on and provide us advice and counsel on a number of different topics and issues. Those will be highlighted on our website and also on Facebook, as well as through our publication at this meeting. Is there any unfinished business? Hearing none. This is a public comment period, which we have a second meeting every month. This is a forge an opportunity to any member of the public who would like to share their thoughts with the board on any subject. And the time limitation is three minutes per speaker. And so I'm going to, we have a sign up sheet, and I'll ask, I'll call out names, and I'd ask you to come up to the podium and please announce your name and address for the record. First person to sign up, Rachel Anders.
My name is Rachel Anders. I live at 117 Clearview Road here in Statesville, North Carolina. As you know, we've got protesters out here talking about our monument. I found out this week, the monument itself is not the issue. It is one of the inscrip, inscriptions on the monument that reads, even though the Confederacy lost, their cause was just. I don't think we can do anything about removing that from the monument. It is a 115-year-old monument, so that is something we need to take into consideration. But I don't think the, the answer is to move our monument. I would like to see maybe some more contextual signage put up out there. I know we do have the one sign that talks about the monument in the Civil War in Aridale County, but I would like to see more spoken about that. I know the county has upwards 80 pages of names of enslaved people that lived in Aridale County. So I thought, you know, we, maybe we could do a smaller monument to their contributions to Aridale County. I don't have a cost yet. I don't know what that would cost, so obviously I'm, I'm unprepared to, to provide that to you, but I would like for the commissioners to at least consider that.
Thank you, Ms. Anders. Appreciate your, sharing your suggestions, and they will definitely be taken under advisement. I know there's a great deal of public interest in exploring ways where all citizens of Aridale County can be of one accord and, and put history in the proper context.
Absolutely. Thank you guys for listening.
Thank you very much. The second individual who signed up, Mr. Scott Stevenson.
Good evening. My name's Scott Stevenson. I live at 636 North Center Street, Statesville. What I wanted to talk about was some of the formatting that goes on here with regards to the meeting. It's, it's, it's really 180 out from what the city does. They allow, and tonight's the exception, it's a short agenda, but I think it might be better if you were to move the public portion to the front. Reason being is what happened last, Todd, month ago, you had the folks over here that had an issue with the masks. And I was thinking, well, if they've got an issue with the mask, let them say what they want and get out, right? It's better air for everybody, a mask or no mask, in that situation anyway. But that's kind of my reasoning behind that. Some of the other things I wanted to talk about, I'm a 20-year veteran in the Navy, and there was a lot of security measures that occur in different buildings and whatnot. I think you might be, it might be a good thing to maybe do temperature checks, people coming in here. And I would also think that you would set up a magnetometer for people to walk through. Anybody could walk up through here, nobody checked me, I'm not carrying anything, not even my pocket knife, I left it in my truck. But anybody could come up here with a, with a firearm and just, you know, sneak it around and take somebody out, I'm sure, before they got taken out. But I think that's important in these times we're living in. And I'm probably going to say the same thing for the city guys, because they don't do it over there either. I don't believe they have a magnetometer. But you go into the justice hall, court, you walk through one, and granted, it might take some time to process some people, especially if there's a bigger crowd than this, but I think that might be helpful. Because we, it's kind of a dark time, and with these folks that were sitting here before coming up here, I would say they're probably this close to threatening all of you with the words they said, you know, about the monument. If you can't protect that, it's going to get worse, they said something to that effect. And I just think it, you might want to review that kind of procedures and whatnot. And I know you've got stuff set up already, and you've got the way you do things, but I'm really glad you got this classical one, because I didn't start mine. But I just think maybe that might be a good idea to review the safety of those things and, and going along with the whole COVID thing. Because I think it's possible, I picked it up at the last meeting. I had COVID, I got over it, I'm clear, and it was very weird, and I think something, I don't know if they can add it, but if they can add the recovered numbers, that might give you a bigger, you have that, okay.
Yeah.
Because I just don't see that or hear it, so, but thank you, free time, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Stevenson, and, you know, we're constantly evaluating our security measures for the general public as well as our staff. And so, you know, it's, it's a sign of the times that you have to do that, but we hate to, you know, the more restrictive you are, the, the more that sometimes throws a damper on free expression. So we're trying to balance those kind of things, but appreciate your comments. That completes the number of folks who have signed up for our public comment period. I'd ask if there's anyone else here that would like to be heard. Okay, well, why don't you come up and if you'll just state your name and address when you get up to the mic, if you would.
Can I keep this off for two seconds, if I could?
Yeah, when you get up there, yeah.
I'll try and get in three minutes, okay? My name's Mark Crooks, 501 South Mulberry, number 203, Statesville. Yeah, I've been in town now four years, exactly four years. And, long story short, this is a cold town. I mean, I was, I want to share something with you. There's a place called Oddfell's Lodge, right across from the police station over there. A year ago, exactly, I walked over there, and a guy named Don, who lives next door, I don't know his last name, we were talking for a minute, he said, I don't know where, he says there's two children's caskets in the basement there. And I talked to about 10 police officers in town here. I walked two of them around there, I said, can I file a report on this? He said upstairs, there's a series of chairs set up, as if it was a courtroom. And he said the names of the people who own that place, or whatever, who remembers, are on the backs of those chairs. I started asking around about this. One of the guys, a couple weeks ago, he said, quote, forget anybody ever told you about that. Somebody else said there's morticians down there. In fact, he was out front protesting, I'm sure it's the same one. Somebody else said there's board games down there, those are for kids. A fourth one said, what is it? There's some kind of filming going on down in that basement.
You guys just speak up a little bit.
There's a gentleman in that basement, Oddfell's Lodge. The police will not take a report. I've asked about 10 police officers. It's right across from the police station, it's on Sharp Street. I mean, we can talk about masks or whatever, but if there are children being harmed in that basement, and we're sitting there doing nothing, I haven't been a Christian, there's, there's eternal consequences for these kind of things. I've done what I can. I just set up a meeting today with Police Chief Addison, and I'd like to share with you, maybe we should do something about that. Can somebody call the police out and just, hey, let's go over and take a look in there? And we can talk to Don, I'll go with him. I mean, if I'm supposed to keep out of the house, one police officer said, hey, it's private property, whatever. But, I mean, that's, we're talking children's caskets in the basement. I looked over at Don, he saw, it's just symbolic of life and death. A mortician. I asked over here a bunch Johnson Funeral Home about a month ago, I asked them about morticians in that basement. Within about 45 minutes, your sheriffs, excuse me, your sheriffs, they went through my bag, and then minutes later, they came up with a, a...
30 seconds.
I'm done?
You've got 30 seconds.
Oh, well, I was, I was arrested, in a sense, I was whisked away to psychiatric ward at Davis Hospital. I've been there about, I don't know, two dozen times in the last four years, asking questions or having insomnia. But, long story short, you know, the police whisked me away, I can't find out who the magistrate was who signed this, is a complaint from the guy who owns the funeral parlor. He says that I had a hatchet, and I took it out of the bag, wanted, look, the police, just before they came out, minutes before they came out with this IVC, they looked through my bag, there's no hatchet in there.
Okay.
What's going on in this?
Well, you, you've got to your three minutes.
Okay, I'm off, I'm done.
Thank, thank you for your comments, and I hope that, yeah, just keep your eyes peeled and just follow, follow the law.
I'm leaving, but I'm just saying, we're all going to stand before.
Mark, Merry Christmas, Mark. So you guys know Mark's one of our great downtown Plaza residences, and we see him downtown often, great guy. Merry Christmas, Mark.
Okay. What's his last name?
Sir.
Last name?
Mark. Um, in, in your last name, Grogan, Mark?
C. D. M.
Yeah, Mark Grogan.
Gross.
Gross, gross.
Yeah.
Merry Christmas, Mark.
Thank you. All right. That concludes our public comment period. County, new business.
Mr. Chairman, I got three short items. First, there's a public announcement to help the Aridale Stateful Schools get a message out. Due to expected ICU conditions, tomorrow, Aridale Stateful Schools will operate on a two-hour delay for students and staff on Wednesday, December the 16th, 2020. Employees should refer to option five on the inclement weather procedures portion of our website or their staff email. High school students who have scheduled exams tomorrow should wait for direction from their individual schools. An instruction is delayed for the two hours for all students, which includes those students who are attending school virtually or in person. Two-hour delay tomorrow for potential inclement weather. Item two, you guys may have read, the register of deeds, Ron Wyatt, has accepted the town manager's position in Troutman, and that will take effect as of January 4th, 2021. And I want to let you guys know, because this may acquire, occur before our next meeting, that I have intentions on putting my name before the Aridale County GOP Executive Committee to be considered for that appointment, to that remaining term. And I'll keep you abreast of how that process plays out once there's a vacancy. And the third item I have, on behalf of the board, I would like to wish all of our staff and citizens a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. And, and I'd like to ask that we all keep the families in our prayers of those impacted by COVID losses, and all of our healthcare and emergency services staff as they serve the public and navigate through these challenging COVID times. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. I knew someone would step up and be Santa Claus, wish everyone a Merry Christmas. Okay, county managers report.
Only one item to report, and that's to let everyone know that county offices will be closed on Thursday and Friday of next week, which is December the 25th and, or 24th and December the 25th, for Christmas. And I'm shocked that it's actually next week, but we will be closed on that Thursday and Friday.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. We do have three items to report out from our closed session pursuant to economic development items pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11 subsection A4. Is there a motion?
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
Going for the public hearing, correct?
Yes.
Okay, I would like to make a motion to call for a public hearing on January the 5th, 2021, at 7:00 PM regarding a maximum economic development incentive of $270,158 over a five-year period for Project 126, based on a $15 million investment in Aridale County.
Motion by Vice Chairman Neder. Any further comment? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed like sign?
Aye.
We are unanimous. Is there a second motion?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion, call a, a public hearing on January 5th, 2021, at 7:00 PM regarding a maximum economic development incentive of $241,166 over a five-year period for Project Buffalo, based on $12,234,000 investment in Aridale County.
Motion by Commissioner Brown. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed like sign?
Aye.
We are unanimous. Motion approved.
Mr. Chairman, I have a third motion. I'd like to make a motion to call for a public hearing also on January 5th, 2021, at 7:00 regarding a maximum economic development incentive of $145,00811 over a five-year period for Project Tampa, based on a $9 million investment in Aridale County.
Motion by Commissioner Haupt. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Is there anything else to come before the board? All hearts free? Merry Christmas to everyone, Happy New Year. Merry Christmas to everyone, Happy New Year. 2021 is going to be on the upswing. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion, we adjourn.
Motion by Commissioner Brown. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Right, Marvin? We adjourn.